Back. Thank you, everybody. Apologize for being late. Just a reminder that votes will be called by roll call since we have Darren Dillon on the phone. McBack is here. You want to call an meeting to order?
I'd like to call MBTA Communities Multi-Family Housing Advisor Committee to order. We're meeting on February 15th, 2024.
Terrific. Thank you. All right, so we are here with our public hearing for PB 2401, the amended zoning bylaw to create the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Housing Overlay District. Jeff, Mr. Morset, you want to start us off here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a continuation of a public hearing. We do have a couple of folks here tonight to help us out. So first, we have NIMCOG here to provide us with some information about how sometimes housing production can be tied to the economy and some other benefits. So we very much like them to provide some information to share with this board. We haven't really delved into that yet. And then afterwards, we also have Dylan Sussman from Dotson and Flinker. And what we'd like to do is to provide you with an update. There are some minor, what we feel are relatively minor changes to the draft bylaw based on some preliminary comments not yet in writing from the municipal law unit of the Attorney General's Office, as well as reviewed by our town council. So we'd like to go over that and get some additional direction from both the planning board and McBack. And then if we get through that, maybe talk about some of the approach for additional public outreach between now and town meetings.
Terrific.
Does that work if we might begin with NIMCOG?
That'd be great.
Okay. So, yeah, you can either sit at the table or at the mic, where is more comfortable?
If it's okay to sit, that would be great. Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Kelly Lenema. I'm the deputy director at the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. It's great to be here with you tonight. We are working with, we are the regional planning agency, working with seven of the communities in Northern Middlesex on compliance with MBTA communities. So pretty much, out of the nine communities that we serve, seven of them are subject to this law, and we've worked with every one of those in some capacity or another. What we, at the request of town staff, we did a lot of research to pull out a number of academic articles, articles from the Urban Land Institute, articles from planning, the American Planning Association, from academic journals, to make the connection between housing production and particularly areas of greater housing density and economic development. What is often missed as part of this law is that the law, the House Bill 5250 was passed by Governor Baker as part of an economic development bill. One of the foundational reasons why this law was passed, because the state was starting to see a reduction in its ability to attract new companies, a reduction in its ability to retain companies that were here. And it was also, the companies that are in the state have been losing employees at record levels. We are also, according to a Massachusetts Taxpayer Association report, we are bleeding out basically 25 to 34-year-olds. And the issue with this is that at the state level and at a lot of, the level of a lot of municipalities, we have basically every year more and more folks retiring than those who are entering the workforce. This makes it very hard for us to produce economic gains as a state. It also makes it very difficult when it comes to local tax revenues, to local economic revenues. The other reason, the other issue that we're seeing is because of a lack of housing production, the state has struggled, this distinctly impacts the state's revenue. And I think what we've seen from Governor Healey this year is that because those transactions that are lost because of a lack of housing exchanges, the state is unable to provide the same kind of support, or it's had to cut some kinds of supports to communities to do the kind of planning and infrastructure improvements that need to be done. And so this all relates to sort of a systems-based thinking about housing. We put together this memo that I believe you have before you tonight, and it sort of outlines some of the key factors here. The first is regarding, when you think about areas, and what we're not doing is we're not looking at increased housing density everywhere. The thing that MBTA Communities law requires is focusing one area in your community, or maybe two small areas, where this increased housing density would be allowed by right. So it's not housing everywhere. We don't want to unlock everything. We just want to think strategically about where this increased density is important. And the reasons why this is important is because when you have areas with a little bit more density, you have statistically areas where there is a more likelihood of increased economic activity. This supports, for example, if you were going to have a corner store, from a trade-level impact, you need about 800 to 1,000 households in order to support a corner store. So you want to see a certain kind of density in order to encourage different sorts of retail uses or different sorts of commercial uses, and that kind of walkability, that walkable environment. A critical mass of foot traffic is always crucial for retail, and it always has been. This is why when you look to kind of what we love about historic town centers, or if you go up to a small town in Vermont, it's, what's great about it is you get like these small areas of commercial activity, and that's because you have an increased amount of foot traffic, because you have a density of housing that's right around that area. And so increasing housing density is shown to support, and there are a number of studies that prove this, it's shown to support that kind of retail environment that people want to see somewhere in town. And so this is where we have this planning practice right now, this planning activity, where we're trying to select where those, where those districts would be. Furthermore, employers tend to follow workers. And this is a different way, this is a different game than maybe it was 20, 40 years ago, where workers tended to go where the employment was. And now, when we see an outpouring of 20, you know, our young talent from universities and colleges and trade schools, when they're going to other states, the companies are following them because they want to be where some of these younger workers are. And so it's really important to not necessarily only cater to them. You want to also balance the needs with your older residents and your seniors, but you also want to provide the kind of resources that these community members want to see. It's also important as far as job creation is concerned. So when you allow for greater density of housing units, you see some turnover of areas that you might want to see redeveloped. This results in increases in job opportunities for the construction and trades industries. It also provides more economic opportunity from an infrastructure perspective in the medium and long term. Furthermore, when you have more people living in an area, in a concentrated area, you have greater support for things like retail industry, for professional services, for the kinds of things that people want to see in their community. Jobs in America in certain, in certain sectors are densifying. So the Shearer Report that's linked to in this document really shows that as, that metro areas and suburban areas can do more to prioritize and support trends in densifying job sectors by having density and development. We're not talking about hyper-density. We're not talking about New York City. We're talking about like having three or four stories that maybe allow for proximity to commercial and professional uses. Furthermore, there's, there's benefits to the property values and tax revenue. So the Von Hoffman article that we provide a link to demonstrates that not only does multifamily dwellings, they don't have a negative impact on single-family use, they actually have a positive benefit. So what that report indicates is that areas that, the Harvard Joint Center on Housing researched that had high areas of multifamily housing, they actually had single-family homes that were valued the highest as well. So there is a correlation, a strong correlation between the provision of multifamily homes and the value of single-family homes. There is not a negative correlation there. Furthermore, in Massachusetts, what we know is that because we have a constrained tax system because of Prop 2 and 1/2, we're sort of all competing for this new growth. And in areas where you don't have large tracts of land that you can dedicate to new growth based on economic, like attracting a very large employer, we're sort of limited to having new growth be from a housing perspective. And when you also connect that housing growth with multifamily housing, the rate of families with children in multifamily housing is significantly lower than the rate of families with children in a larger single-family home. And so you don't have the same correlation between the, maybe the impacts on the schools in a multifamily dwelling that you would see in a larger single-family home. Multifamily homes are basically a way for younger folks to gain a foothold in a community and then gain some wealth and wealth equity in that, in maybe a condo before they might decide they want to expand or settle into a larger home or something like that. It's also a way for seniors who don't want to maintain a larger structure to be able to have an opportunity to downsize in the community that they've invested in for so many years. Finally, not finally, sorry, inefficient use of resources. So when you do have higher density housing, we have reports here that demonstrate a correlation between efficient use of resources. When you allow for that kind of housing, you have more people per capita using a roadway or more people per capita using utilities and other kinds of infrastructure than you do with a single-family home. You also limit the need to expand those infrastructure services out to areas that don't have them right now because you're densifying the area where those services are provided. Environmental sustainability is an important element of this as well. I know there's often a concern with loss of open space or parks and recreation areas. But what we also know is that amount of fuel that we use, the amount of driving that we do in a single occupancy vehicle is directly related to our land use decisions when you, and our development patterns, much of which have been organized around the use of fossil fuels and inexpensive gasoline. When you have a compact environment that encourages walking, biking, non-single occupancy vehicle use, and an increased efficiency of infrastructure. It also, it also decreases the pressure to convert undeveloped land into housing because you have, you've sort of like unlocked that pressure valve on a certain parcel to allow for more housing in that one parcel instead of having that pressure sort of expand outward. There is also a report I did not link into here, but I am happy to provide it by the Jonathan Rose Companies that was done as part of the EPA that demonstrates that residents in multifamily and attached single-family homes use far less electricity per unit. They require less energy to heat and cool their homes than detached single-family homes do. Finally, with the support for transit-oriented development, higher density housing is conducive to the implementation of TOD. You need to have, basically, there's demonstrated, there's demonstrated research that shows that you need at least six to eight units per acre in order to support bus transit. And if you want to support higher frequency bus transit, you want to think more about getting something like 15 units per acre in order to accommodate express bus transit. So these things are all sort of related in a, and I guess what you could call a virtuous cycle. You can't plan for housing alone. Housing is correlated with economic development, and it's correlated with use of transit. But when you do have that kind of density, it drives more support for creating a new bus station or providing more frequent bus service. Without that kind of density, it's very hard to justify that when you're looking at expanding a transportation network. And then finally, we did add just an element here on the diversification of housing options. And I think, as I mentioned before, one thing that 3A does provide and compliance with 3A provides is it provides opportunities for those young adults who are leaving our state, going to Austin and Florida and elsewhere, for lower-cost housing and economic opportunities. It allows them for a way to move back to perhaps the community where they were raised or someplace that's close to that. It allows them to stay in the state where they got their education, and it allows them to contribute economically to the success of our communities. It also allows, as I mentioned before, our aging seniors to stay in the community, but perhaps not have to stay in a large 3,000-square-foot house that they are struggling to maintain. So it provides this kind of housing choice for people at all ages and for different family types. You could see a family that's a separated family or a blended family. By providing different kinds of housing options, you create opportunities for people to have that sort of independence and autonomy and ability to get settled in a community and contribute to that community. So overall, I'm happy to answer any questions about the research. We will also be condensing this into a one-pager, so open to any comments on what resonates with you so that we can do that more successfully. But this was a joy to go into the research and find out more and be able to provide it to you tonight. So thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. I'll go to the board. Does anybody have any questions?
I think one of the toughest, listening to you speak, one of the toughest questions we have to address is the cost of infrastructure services versus the tax revenue for these homes, and specifically, schools, you know, at a cost of what is it, $6,000, $7,000 a student. None of our, very few of our residents, residences here are tax-positive to paying for the education costs. We depend upon the business revenue tax to really offset that. My concern, well, my concern is how do we answer these tough questions, such as at the information session next week, about that? And what, for example, what is the expected density of students in multifamily housing? You know, for years, we used a rule of thumb, roughly two students were coming out of our, our four-bedroom homes, a little more. And now it's dropped, actually. I think it's, it's dropped to one and 1/2.
Well, I think first of all is that the data shows that folks in their 20s to 40s are having fewer children and they're having them later. So that's definitely, just, that's nationwide. In higher-density areas, that number drops further. And when you look at multifamily homes, we can, there's a great report that was done for, I hate to say at Milton, but there was a great report that was done for Milton with regard to, with RKG, who's an excellent consultant. I don't know if you actually worked with them recently.
Not recently, but we have.
Yeah, they did a fiscal impact analysis of multifamily housing, and they included, they had a lot of metrics for what you could assume would be, if you have, if you have this many acres, you could see this many housing units, and a breakdown of what a standard developer would do as far as how many of those units would be studios versus one-bedroom versus two-bedroom, et cetera. Overall, the majority of units are likely to be studio to two-bedroom. And the other data point that we see when we look at the multiplier effects for two-bedroom units in a multifamily dwelling is that very few of people who live in a two-family unit, or, sorry, a two-bedroom unit, actually have another, have a child. So often, that two-bedroom unit is often used as, that second unit is often used as an office, or it's used in a roommate situation. We can provide you with the multiplier rates that were used, but overall, we see that multifamily housing, even for three-bedroom units, they're typically, I mean, I'll get to that in a sec. So for multifamily housing, you know, even for three-bedroom units, there's a much lower rate of people having children in those multifamily units than they do in a single-family home. The other factor is that, you know, all of our communities need to provide educational services. I mean, it's, it's, we don't want to, part of the reason why we're not allowed to restrict these units based on housing type is because it's a fair housing issue when you start to create units that aren't for families with children.
No, I understand that, but what we are doing is encouraging a greater density in a solid area. So, on the other hand, it's very positive to hear that the, there's a positive real value impact for the existing homes in that community.
What we do see is, we see in the state, and I think across the nation more broadly, we see that a lot of, you know, the boomer generation and older, they're not moving out of their single-family homes. Part of that is because people don't necessarily want to move out, and part of that is because there aren't enough housing units that are smaller for older, older populations to move into. And so it's, it's a struggle because when, we've, in this country, we've kind of relied on this cycle of people moving into a home when they start a family, and then staying in that home, and then eventually moving out of that home, or moving into, maybe moving back with other family members, or moving into a retirement community, and that's just not happening at the same rates because we don't have the kind of housing to support people who want to downsize. And so that's created a situation where there's really, and when we also don't create those kind of units, we don't have the kind of places for younger people who are just graduating from college or graduate school or trade school to move into, to have that kind of independence from their parents. So when you don't have that, you kind of lose the ability for younger people to move in, maybe rent an apartment for a while, decide where they want to, you know, set up shop or build roots and then, and then get stable, you know, stabilize in a community. And it is true that as people have more children or, you know, settle into a community, they tend to do that in a single-family home or maybe even in a duplex. And so it's just less likely, it's, the statistics bear out that in a multifamily housing situation, people might live there with an infant, but if they have a second child, they tend to, they tend to move out.
We did gather, we looked at some existing multifamily developments in Westford, and some of the most recent ones, particularly the Bell Apartments and some others, you know, the multifamily buildings like that, the apartment style that's for rent, it tended to be like one child of school-age years per four units. So it wasn't, it wasn't what people feared it would be for the number of school-aged children, but it, in multiple examples, which is not a guarantee, that's what will continue, but it was about one per every four units.
And I'm also not sure that that actually provided the affordability that we're trying to address here for new hires, whether they be high school graduates getting their first job or college graduates.
It's like people who, people who make too much to qualify for affordable housing, but they don't make enough to actually afford a single-family home, you know?
Affordable, in that context. It was just.
Yeah, attainable housing.
It wasn't even, I mean, for somebody who made the money, it was still, it's a very pricey option for their first residence, unfortunately. So we still have that need even with that, that large development. The last thing I think we, we do need to address, and I recognize there's a sweet spot in terms of density, in terms of how much you have and how much of an area. Because I spent 13 years before I was, came to Westford, whatever it was, 28 years ago, 20, yes, it's been 28 years or so, in the Virginia, Maryland, DC suburbs, and Fairfax, Virginia is an example where you do have density of 15 to 18 units per acre, but it's over large portions of the county, very large areas. Yes, they have rapid, they have the public transit, but they also have severe traffic jams on the weekends. And, you know, it's one thing to have it during rush hours, another matter that your Saturdays are spent in traffic. So we kind of have to figure out what that sweet spot, and we're not there. I mean, we're a small community. And so you will have that limited density to provide it. And more than that, it's not just providing public transit in the sense of buses. I think it also increases the availability of services such as Lyft and Uber taxis because we are fairly poorly served by those in this community because there just isn't the demand. So you don't have that availability of non-owner-owned vehicles.
But what does that have to do with the price of tea in China?
No, I think we're gonna, we're gonna, having, having gone before some of these communities in the past with our bylaws, you're gonna find your senior residences, residents asking these tough questions about what's it do to my tax bill? Why should I have to pay for more schooling? And you have to have those answers ready. And what about traffic? These are all the negatives, but I think there's positive responses in terms of what it does. For them, they would probably welcome having more public transit options as people are getting older. And as you said, trying to downsize. We've had a few recent attempts at that. I don't think it's gone as well as we hoped it would. And so there's plenty of opportunity in this community to do that.
So the greatest impact on our school system has been the construction of single-family homes over the course of the last 30 years.
Yep.
And, and there's nothing, the law prohibits us from doing anything that would prevent school-aged children from moving into these new developments. Matter of fact, the law prohibits towns from limiting or regulating the number of school-aged children that can move in anywhere because there's a need for housing. So there's nothing, there's nothing that we can do in the bylaw, one way or another, to guarantee to anybody that this won't have an impact on the, the school system. I think the good news is that the school population is declining somewhat right now, and it, and.
And we have excess capacity in the system.
But, but I, we can't promise anybody one, one way or another what's going to happen. The market's going to decide who moves into the units. The developers are going to decide what the units will be sold or rented for. There's nothing we can do about it.
Oh, I understand. But when we did, like, Flex Development, we did CG Residential Multifamily, we did the Community Preservation Act. We went out, and I was part of those roadshows, where we went before the various boards. We went before the, at the senior center several times to make these presentations. And at the senior center, that's the common question of what's it going to do to my taxes? I'm already on a fixed income. I'm maxed out. What does this do to me? And why should I care? And why should I vote for it? And that's, that's the tough community that we have to sell to.
And I think, I know your land use department has done an excellent job looking at new growth potential as well. So I think that would be another offset to taxes, which is that new growth. And, and I think you're right. We don't have a crystal ball. We don't know exactly what kind of units would be created or who would move into those units. It is a market-based decision. Really, all we can do is look at data for recent, maybe like the last 10 years of data is for like, what, how do developers think about developing multifamily? And what kind of units do they typically create when there's an opportunity? And who lives in those units? So that's really, we really only have the ability to look backward on that. But I think that's better than nothing, so.
Dylan, do you have anything?
Yeah, thanks. I just had one question. I think I heard the speaker say that seven of nine communities served by NIMCOG are in the MBTA Communities process. I'm wondering how many of those communities have established wastewater treatment and public sewage versus do not, as Westford does? Not.
I think, I'm trying to remember if Tingsborough does.
Tingsborough does not.
Yeah. So it's, it's Tingsborough, Chelmsford, Billrica, Billrica and Chelmsford both do. Tewksbury does, and Lowell does. You do, or you do not, I'm sorry. So it's a mix. Now, the wastewater, the town is not required to provide those services to a new development. That's up to the developer to provide.
Can I answer your question, Dylan? So I think Westford, Pepperell, and Dunstable are the towns that do not have municipal.
Yeah, so, yeah, that didn't answer my question. And Tingsborough, yeah. I guess the, the point, or I guess my, my real question is, is NIMCOG looking at the dynamics that the MBTA Communities Act, like, is putting before communities as driving or potentially driving discussions in these communities around the need for advanced wastewater treatment? Because I'm just thinking through the dynamics that this will impose in Westford, and it will either limit our opportunity to put in the most dense housing that we could, or it could drive us to have conversations around master planning to say, in order to support this at its fullest, we need to revisit the topic of whether or not we need to think about wastewater treatment in Westford.
I think that's an important discussion that I know that NIMCOG has had in the past, and that's especially, you know, the lack of sewer and water infrastructure is something that comes up repeatedly from multiple of our communities as far as a barrier to more housing production. So that's something that we're looking at federal grant opportunities to do additional studies on. It's going to take a regional collaboration. So getting, getting our municipal leaders to all agree to maybe what the definition of the problem is and the fact that we need to fix it is, is an important first step. But we are looking at those opportunities. We don't have an answer that will work tomorrow. This is a long-range problem that needs to be resolved.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Dylan. Darren?
No, Kelly, thank you. I think this is helpful. I think you mentioned you guys working on doing a one-pager, kind of summarizing this.
Yes.
Which I think will be helpful. We have a couple of handouts in the beginning of our packet tonight, which I think will be really educational for folks. And like a one-pager summarizing these points here would be really helpful as well. So I think that'll be great.
Great. Anybody from?
I have one to follow. You mentioned regional collaboration, and I forgot to mention this because you kind of hinted at something that got me thinking during your, your first part of the presentation, and that was, we're doing this as individual communities. Is there any effort to kind of help us look at, you know, as we do this, these overlay districts, how they relate to one another? Because I think from, from a regional perspective, it would make more sense sometimes if they were done keeping in mind what the surrounding communities are doing as well as yourself. But right now, I think all of us are doing this independently. And I didn't know if what NIMCOG had in terms of their perspective on this, and how could we we do this maybe smarter from a regional perspective, let alone the eastern portion of Massachusetts?
It's the beauty of being a homeroom state. No, we are, we are looking at, so it, it's been a little bit difficult, because every community has kind of gotten started on their own schedule. We are looking sort of post facto on what the, what the various districts of the community or communities are coming up with are going to be. And we're also, because we serve the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is largely transportation-oriented, we're looking at these from a transportation perspective with our MPO. We're also working on a regional housing strategy called At Home in Greater Lowell. We have a kickoff meeting on, so I'm just gonna plug that shamelessly here. A kickoff meeting on March fourteen from one to five, that I would love to see as many of you at as possible. But this is to talk about housing at a regional level. And so thinking not only about MBTA communities, but also about like, where are the appropriate areas for housing and different types of housing, providing housing choice, how to meet the need on a regional basis. That's gonna be part of that discussion.
Yeah, because, because looking at our western border of our, our overlay district with Littleton, Littleton has some pretty significant activities happen for business development on their eastern flank towards us. And these would kind of marry up well, as you said, bringing housing closer to where the business opportunities are.
Yeah.
So.
I think if we were to truly embrace the regional approach, and I'm not saying it's without merit, I'm just saying we would have needed a very different deadline on the mandate if that were to be-
Oh, I understand.
And a different mandate.
Great. Any, have any questions? Anybody in the audience, any questions? Kelly, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we can, Dylan Sussman from Godson and Flinker up?
Great.
Got some, well, Dylan, why don't you show-
Good evening, members of the planning board and MCMAC members. MCMAC people in person. Had a lot of virtual meetings with them. So I wanted to just walk through some of the changes in the latest version of the zoning. I would say this, the changes are not changes in direction or sort of content, they're mostly tightening, and largely in response to the feedback, the preliminary feedback from the Municipal Law Unit that Jeff mentioned earlier. So I think there are, although we haven't seen the actual writing of what they, what they say, I guess the-
That's correct.
The, the word through the grapevine is basically they thought there might be a little bit too much discretion in some places, and a lack of clarity about multifamily being allowed by right, despite it saying it's allowed by right explicitly. So those are, those are the general direction of the changes. So there's some changes that were made by your town council. Those are largely focused on reducing the appearance of discretion, and clarifying that multifamily is in fact allowed as of right. Clarifying the relationship between multifamily and mixed use, and mixed use in particular when it's by special permit, because the underlying commercial use is by special permit currently. We added one element to the purpose statement related to housing for people with disabilities and site design for people with disabilities, in response to comments from the Commission on Disability. Consolidated the administration section a bit, and made some edits there for clarity. And another sig, so the, the most significant change to this is basically has to do with site plan review, where I think the Municipal Law Unit felt that your current site plan review section had too much discretion, or had discretion in some areas. So when this was first written, there was a question of whether there should be a, a section in here for site planner for you, or just refer out to your current section. And so in writing it, I decided to refer out to your, your current section, but with that feedback, basically, put a new, a new site plan review section in here, which borrowed from your current site plan, I basically kept what I could, but then added material that I thought was necessary to clarify the procedures for site plan review. So as you probably know, site plan review is not something that's in Chapter forty-eight, it's not in the zoning statute, which means that there are no procedures in the zoning statute to tell you what to do. The town has to say exactly how everything has to work. So I added material there to, to, to clarify some of those procedures. And then the, the decision criteria that were in your current zoning, which I'm not sure which of them were, were deemed to be problematic, they're in fact very, very similar to most communities in Massachusetts. But not knowing which ones were, were problematic, I basically changed it to just say that the site plan has to follow all of the requirements of the zoning, and in particular, the development standards in the, in the multifamily overlay district bylaw. And so there isn't that sort of second layer that's often in site plan review standards, where there's, you know, ten points where you can go through them and say, yes, it does this, yes, it does this, and yes, it does this, very clearly. Which in order to interpret those, you have to actually look at the standards that are in the bylaw anyway, if you're, if you're really doing a thorough job. So now basically, you look at the standards that are in the bylaw and say, does it, does it meet those, or does it not meet those? So I think a question for you all is, does that work? And then the last other sort of substantive change in this has to do with applying some of the standards that are currently in your zoning bylaw for major commercial and major retail projects to multifamily as well. So previously, because you had these criteria in your site plan review section that would get to things like traffic management and so forth, I didn't think you needed to, to use those performance standards that are currently in your bylaw explicitly. But without those, I, I think it's wise to refer to those and apply them to multifamily housing. So those are, those are the changes. The site plan review section that's in there, I had to put together pretty quickly in response to the late feedback from, or the feedback from Municipal Law Unit. So there's, there's still some work to do on that. Pieces that I think need more attention are the timeline for review, the question of criteria for review. I think it should have a section that I neglect to put in the leave as in your current bylaw about laps, or, you know, if, if somebody doesn't start construction with a certain amount of time, then the site plan is no longer valid. And probably should have a section about modifications to approved site plans. So there's the changes that I intend to make, if you all agree they're worth making. And again, my main questions are, do you think the, the, the approach to criteria is okay? Or do you feel like you need some specific criteria? And if so, what should those be? And the other question I think that's significant is just, what should the timeline be for site plan review? Your current bylaw has a sixty-day timeline, which is shorter than many communities. So I'm wondering how that's working for you. It's a bit of a challenge here, because the, the guidelines for the MBTA Communities law say that you shouldn't require something of multifamily that you don't require of other uses. So, having talked to your staff, on the one hand, we, we don't want to make the timeline longer for multifamily, because it might appear that you're delaying the permitting of multifamily. On the other hand, if the current timeline is really unrealistic, and you're never hitting it, it might make sense to, to put in a realistic timeline. And I, it's probably pretty unlikely that it's gonna get rejected, I think, if it's realistic, especially considering that yours is shorter than, I think, any other example I've seen. I've seen mostly in the sort of ninety, hundred-twenty days range, and, and the model bylaw from the state had language like, essentially that site plan review should start within thirty days, and in general, should be completed within six months. And that was the model bylaw from the state. Sort of very vague language about the ultimate length of the timeline. Any questions, comments?
So the planning board rarely meets the sixty-day, excuse me, the planning board and the applicants rarely meet that sixty-day window. But I think we're, you're hitting into a, a problem with the Municipal Law Unit if you propose a time period that's greater than the site plan approval time period in the, in the rest of the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, it's definitely a concern.
So I, so I, I would think it just stays where it is, and the planning board deals with it like it deals with every other applicant, and if you're not satisfied, you have enough information, you send them back to the drawing board. I have another question, though, regarding the, the section on criteria in Section Five. In Five B, the, the planning board may not impose any conditions modification or restriction that would make it infeasible to develop multifamily housing. I don't think that's supposed to be the standard, right? Site plan approval is supposed to be issued unless there are issues between the applicant and the board that are intractable. That's the judicial standard. I, I think, I think you could argue forever what's infeasible. So I think we need to come up with something better than that. What do you think?
If you have a suggestion, I'd be open-
Not yet. I just saw this just now, I'm still thinking.
Yeah, well, so, I think the whole question is of applying site plan review is, it's challenging, right? Because you're not allowed to, you're not allowed to say no to the use, you're only allowed to regulate the parameters of the use. But it's pretty difficult to tease out what's the use and what's the characteristics of the use, right?
Well, except we've got thirty pages of what it's supposed to look like, smell like, and taste like. So I think you could, you could deny it if it doesn't meet the requirements of the bylaw. But if it does meet the requirements of the bylaw, I think, I think anything beyond that is, is, we're gonna get into something that's somewhat subjective. You know, it's gonna be a disagreement on the part of the board, whether they like the way that the, the window trim looks, and the, and the color of the facade, and things like that.
Yeah, so I mean, that, that, the reason that's in there is to try to reassure the executive office and housing in Littleton communities who's gonna approve your bylaw, that you won't go overboard in your review. So it's, it's there for them. That's its intent.
But if you didn't have the site plan review provision in here, who, who would, the building commissioner? The building commissioner would be responsible for approving any application, right? So you have to have the process in here.
Right.
And I think the criteria is, does it meet everything else, everything in the bylaw? It shouldn't, it shouldn't make it sound like there's another hurdle you have to get by, which is the, the wishes of the planning board, or, or the opinion of the planning board.
Right, and that's exactly what B is attempting to avoid. So if it, if that's not communicated clearly, obviously, it needs to be re-
Give it some thought.
Yeah. The goal of, the goal of the statement, whether, I don't know what the wording is, but the goal of the statement is to say, the planning board cannot impose any conditions that would make the project not feasible to develop.
Yeah, but that shouldn't be the criteria. We shouldn't, it should, it could still be feasible, the condition could be, we want you to redesign the building, so the doorway is on the other street, we want you to do this, we want you to do that, we want you to stand on your head in a lily pond. That's not unfeasible, but it could be ridiculous, or it could be unnecessary, not ridiculous, it could be unnecessary. It could be regulation for the, for the, for the, for no other purpose other than to meet some subjective opinions of whatever board members are here twenty years from now, right? Because you guys would do a great job, but we're worried about down the road.
Yeah. Well, maybe, so I guess the question for, for the board and the MCMAC is, is that statement even necessary, then? Or should we just cut the line altogether?
I was thinking the same thing.
Because under five A two, the project as described in the application meets the requirements of this zoning bylaw. I mean, that's the criteria, right?
Yeah, exactly. They've, they've submitted a complete application, and the site plan shows that all of the criteria of the entire zoning bylaw are met.
What does Brother Palmer think?
I mean, if, if every project was so easy that all the criteria was met, right? I don't know, this is, I'm embarrassed to say, I think it's above my pay grade. I defer to Attorney Al, whom I have tremendous respect for, but he, he brings up a good point. It can, it can be impractical, reasonable but impractical, and, and maybe we'll have to back in the future, in future wars.
Does it help that infeasible is defined? So the definition of infeasible in this bylaw is not technically possible, or not economically practical and achievable in light of best industry practices?
No, I don't think so. I'm, I'm thinking of a, a hypothetical of a, of a real developer who's interested in building in this town and is following this bylaw. And they build a certain product, that's what they like to build.
Right.
And I'm not necessarily fond of their product, so if I was on the planning board, I would come in there and tell them to get rid of seven of the, of the twenty-four gables in their building, and I'd ask them to do this, and ask them to do that. But I shouldn't be able to do that if I was a member of the planning board. So I'm beginning to catch on to the idea that maybe the whole paragraph goes away. I, I think that might be the solution, but-
Does anyone feel strongly that it should stay?
No.
No, I think it should go to.
But just to clarify, I mean, the point of the paragraph was to reinforce and clarify that that, and reassure, right, that, to the developer and to the state, that that would not happen.
Right.
So, I mean, if we think there's a benefit to having something more forceful that reiterates that, but I think it's clear that this is ambiguous enough that it doesn't, it doesn't-
I think it invites-
Serve that purpose.
The planning board to-
Right.
Make conditions, so long as it's not infeasible.
Well, the, the planning board is, in site plan review is invited to make conditions as their role is to-
But I think if they come in and they've made all the conditions of the bylaw, and we're adding additional restrictions, you know, I mean, then who's to say it's infeasible? I would agree with just striking the paragraph.
Yeah. Yeah, as Paul mentioned, you know, we have thirty pages of criteria, kind of what we're looking for in these projects. So I think that's gonna be covered here if it, if it meets five A two. I think that should be covered.
And what about the question regarding the time period?
I think it's consistent, sixty days is consistent with every other project in town. I think, I don't think we change from that.
Do you want to establish a, so there's a, a paragraph in there about circulation to other boards or departments? Do you want to establish a timeline for that? How long it'll be circulated before they return their comments? Or do you want to just say, by the opening of, they need to return comments by the opening of the public hearing? Or not seeing anything at all about their timeline?
Do we have a timeline currently?
It, it can vary. I don't think we have anything specifically for site plan, but in some other applications, sometimes thirty or forty-five days if there's no comments provided, it's deemed to be a lack of opposition. But if we're working on a sixty-day clock here, I think we would have to have something, you know, just thirty days or so, because otherwise- Because otherwise, the board's not, and the applicant's not going to have practical time to probably react to that. Whereas thirty days, I think thirty days should be reasonable to offer comments upon receipt.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just sitting here looking at the definition that they, they dropped of which boards we're talking about.
Well, this is not on Team Consultant. This was on us. So, at this point, we either want to have a conversation about who you want to include. But then, on a case-by-case basis, there could very well be a particular department or board that might have special interests that wouldn't necessarily be on the normal distribution list. We could simply distribute it to all the various departments and the usual boards. But you never know if a particular site is near, you know, something, I don't know, I'll just say historic, you know? And they might be on that distribution list as well. So, we, we thought if we specified every single department head or board here, if we miss someone, that's a problem. And then, you know, who knows if new departments or boards or committees come up, so, you know.
The, the danger in specifying everything is someone's eventually going to be let off. So, we defer to your wisdom.
I would say irrelevant, makes sense.
I'm going to cause more trouble. The project phasing provisions, sections six. This is page forty-four or fifty in the packet. An applicant may propose, subject to the approval of the planning board, phasing. What, why should the planning board have the power to deny a developer's phasing schedule? Okay?
Devil's advocate. What happens if they propose, say, a multi-phase, three-phase project where they're only proposing multifamily housing in the last phase? And what happens if it never happens? Don't you think they should at least have an opportunity to think about that and work that into the mix, the conversation?
Well, that's what it should say then, that it should say something that, you know, subject to the determination to the, by the planning board that it's, the phasing is not, will not, or ma- oh, will likely not impact the overall goals of the, of the bylaw. Or something. It shouldn't just be to their discretion, their absolute discretion.
Okay. That's a horrible word for the MLU discretion. So, I, I agree. That's just one example that I can think of, but maybe we can come up with something that addresses that.
Well, we could just cut "subject to the approval of the planning board" and, and add...
At this rate, we could be down to forty-six pages. That's right.
You know, I was thinking I should shrink the space between the lines and then it'll be like thirty pages.
Same tree, yeah.
So, cut "subject to the approval of the planning board." This line was basically intended to prevent people from segmenting their projects such that they can afford the, so, so they can avoid the affordability requirements.
No, I get that. I'm just trying to think of another way that if it's not, if it's not trying to avoid that, the applicant should be able to put it in because I, I think initially, it's an unknown market. You know, and someone's going to be afraid to say, "Oh, I, I'll get, I'll get all this up and sold in two years," or "three years," or "five years." You know, we know, we all know of condominium projects that took decades to build up. Just because the market, you know, you have another crash in the economy, things sit around, right?
Right. Yeah, so, I don't know what the exact language is, but it sounds like you, you want all the good stuff of the project to be distributed evenly across the phases of the project. So, for example, you wouldn't want a project where they build the housing and the parking, but don't do any open space improvements that are supposed to be associated with projects, like landscaping.
Yeah.
I do have one question in the bylaw, only because I applied my own house to it and it made no sense. And that is page thirty-four or fifty of the bylaw for attached garages. Number two, when located on the front facade of a building, why, why does the garage need to be set back two feet from the front facade? I have a style house where, if you looked at my house, you would swear I had a sitting room to the left of my front entrance to match the living room to the right. It's not. That's actually my garage that inserts under the house. And the facade of my house is balanced. The windows are identical to the windows in the bedrooms upstairs, but they're on the garage. So, that two feet just makes no sense to me.
Where's your garage door?
The garage door's on the side.
Yeah, so, the line above that is for your, for your situation.
Well, number two does not say anything about the garage door. Thank you. I mean, I can show you, I can show you. There's a picture.
No, 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 I, no, I, I'm with you. Bob, Bob, I'm with you on this one.
Yeah.
All right. So, what's it supposed, how's it supposed to read?
It should say, "When the garage door is located on the front facade of a building, a garage must be set back."
So, so, that's a good question. Why, I understand that it shouldn't be eight feet in front of the front. Why should it be set back? Ask the guy who's currently building a house where the garage is four feet in front of the front door because it wouldn't otherwise fit on the lot. I had no choice.
Yeah, and that's why there are some waiver provisions in there to allow, not to be.
Anyway, it's just... Dylan, do you have anything you want to offer at this point? I don't want to forget that you're...
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate it. Um, yeah, look, I, I'm not sure that I agree with everything that Attorney Alvin is saying, but I also don't have the benefit of having the language open in front of me, so I'm not prepared to debate a lawyer on that. So, I'll, I'll sit back for now.
Okay, thank you, Dylan.
And, and I'm not serving here as a, as an attorney. I'm just a, just a citizen on a subcommittee.
Okay, sir. I do have, I had one other one after that, just the same page, a front porch. It says, "When required." I was trying to understand when a front porch is required.
The table of dimensional regulations.
So, it's required you have a duplex, I believe it is.
Okay.
Two family or a townhouse?
Two family must have a front porch or portico. Townhouse must, must have a front porch or portico in the dimensional standards.
Yeah, no, because I was, it was, what was, was striking me was, again, looking at my front porch. I don't have a front porch six feet deep. Six feet, I mean, I understand the aesthetics, but some of the dimensions seemed random.
Yeah, it's basically the minimum for a fully functional front porch.
So, it's a stoop. Otherwise, it's a stoop.
Otherwise, it's a stoop, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So, it's big enough that you could put a couple tables and a, a couple chairs in it.
Rocking chair.
Rocking chairs.
Now, now.
It's going to be mostly for young people, though, right? So, they won't use rocking chairs.
Put cornhole.
Cornhole, there you go. Do you have anything you want to add? Questions? No. Uh, anybody from, well, any...
I just had one question on page ten of the sustainability section. It appears that we'll be addressing this new specialized code at our special town meeting in the fall. And that's coming forward, and shouldn't that be mentioned in the sustainability portion? Because that has the, that has the potential changes as far as, you know, moving forward in the scratch code.
So, I would be hesitant to make reference to an optional code that we have not yet adopted. And if it is adopted, then everyone has to comply with that code.
So, this is for, this is for bonuses?
Additional density or height, that's optional. The applicant can opt into it. And so, it's giving them a suggested list of sustainability features that the town would consider as being worthwhile to award a bonus.
So, no requirement?
It's not a requirement.
We can't require that. But they can always try to go above and beyond what's required and get some trade-offs for doing that. Anybody in the audience have any questions? Just mention one thing, please. So, some of the definitions, as you discussed earlier, for major commercial projects, major retail projects, we are no longer proposing any adjustments to that section. We are instead bringing that into this section of the bylaw, so that would, so it would be a simple majority vote. As Madam Moderator likes us to remind folks that this proposal would take a simple majority vote instead of a two-thirds majority vote. Town council verbally reviewed it and provided verbally his opinion that it would be a simple majority vote. He will follow that up in writing, so you benefit with that for your March fourth meeting. Because otherwise, if we were changing the definition section, that would require a two-thirds majority vote. We'd want to stick with the simple majority vote, if possible, so. Thank you. All right. Did we answer all of your questions that you wanted answered at this point?
You did, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience have anything they want to add?
Lot of work.
All right, Mr. Morsett, do we have anything else we want to...
With this one, you decide to continue with this?
Well, we do have MICMAC present. There have been some changes to the draft district. As you recall, the triangular area was added, triangle bounded by Powers, Concord, Milton Road. And even though, I don't think MICMAC has had a chance to weigh in on that. As well as there was a parcel at Tech Park East, the Gutierrez company came in and requested that that front parcel be added to the two parcels that was in the district. I don't know if MICMAC is inclined to consider that or weigh in on that.
You know, very discussed in this committee.
It was discussed, but I don't, I don't think you actually...
A vote on that?
Vote.
One, one would be required. I, I was at the meeting where it was discussed at plan, but MICMAC would need to take a official position.
I don't, I think it would be ideal if, at least by the close of the public hearing, MICMAC was able to look at the adjusted language and the draft district area and weigh in that, you know, there's been changes since it was last before your committee, that you're still good with it.
I watched the tape of the hearing where those were added and I'm in favor of it.
I would add that, at that meeting, the planning board said, I think unanimously, that if any property owner came here and, and requested to be added to the district, we would pretty much consider it favorably and automatically add that to the district. That was part of that discussion, because I think that happened when we had that triangular district, as well as Gutierrez asking us, and we said, you know, we would, we would consider favorably any request.
Well, we consider it. We wouldn't necessarily...
We would.
Yeah, I don't think it's automatic.
We were, we were, we were very open to endorsing any of those requests if it was that the request of the property owner.
You need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To make a motion that the, those two parcels, the portion where the Gutierrez property and the portion in between Carrot Road and Power Road be included in the proposed overlay district map?
I have a second. Any discussion? Okay, MICMAC, I'm in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Then, what I did not know, a couple housekeeping items, because time is growing short to town meeting, we are hoping that the planning board, you are obligated to provide a report and recommendation to town meeting. Didn't know if you would like the planning staff to start working on a draft report and recommendation for consideration at your March fourth public hearing. I agree with that.
Yeah, yes. I wouldn't want to make it later because it just puts more pressure on you. So, yes, I would agree with that.
Appreciate that. And then, I did not know, since we have both committees here, did you have any thoughts about the approach to town meeting and outreach? I know with some of the MICMAC members, there has been some willingness to perhaps put together a short video to help with public outreach. We know that some people prefer different, different media. And so, I know with some other significant topics, there have been some short videos. I do recall some of you folks volunteering, perhaps?
Perhaps.
Perhaps Mr. Sanders Cunningham volunteered. I know Joan Kroto volunteered, though she's not here.
Wasn't, I, I thought it was Attorney Alvin.
Oh, you're right.
Attorney Alvin volunteered.
But didn't you also?
It was more of a headlock, Joe. I'd be happy to do whatever was asked of me, as always.
So, reviewing the schedule, is, is that over the schedule moving forward towards town meeting?
So, we are hopeful to receive written comments from the municipal law unit. As you may recall, we've sent the draft amendment in math to both the executive office of housing livable communities so they can provide an opinion about compliance. And the municipal law unit, as they are obligated to review any zoning bylaw amendment. We do anticipate receiving written comments from the municipal law unit anytime now. And so, we just ask for a little indulgence when we receive it. We want to be able to work swiftly with town council. Their greatest concerns that we heard about was about discretion and some areas of clarity. They themselves indicated they didn't feel as though, after they spoken with EO HLC, that there were significant issues or a large number of issues remaining. So, we think it's finite, but we're going to need some discretion to work with council to address those prior to the March fourth public hearing. Because ideally, we want to close a public hearing at March fourth, so you folks can also wrap up report and recommendation. We do think it's important to get this information out there early. It is a lot of information. It's a significant zoning amendment, and so, we want to be able to start that process. And we're continuing to do outreach with some boards and committees, as well as a neighborhood. And as you mentioned, the Cameron Senior Center on the twenty-third. So, we just got to leave enough time to put everything together before town meeting. And that, to us, really means March fourth, hopefully wrap it up.
I'm trying to recall, do we have a second meeting in, do we have one on the eighteenth?
Eighteenth, yeah. But whatever printing has to happen.
I understand that. I'm just, so...
You may need a MICMAC meeting before the fourth, you think?
I don't know. I guess it depends what you folks are willing to discuss tonight for, is there any... I mean, so far, I haven't heard a lot of opposition. But as you know, as you get closer to town meeting, you may, more and more people become aware. I didn't know if...
I would hope we would have a sense from next Friday if there is going to be opposition. If that is received very favorably at that meeting, I would expect that to be a good indicator.
Do we want to fight them back for the March fourth meeting?
MICMAC? I, I think that's wise, yeah.
Yeah. I do have one, could, could we ask the moderator, I'd like to understand the guidelines that she's going to impose for a presentation, because in the past, I was part of the master planning implementation committee with the moderator, with you at the time.
Yeah, you're showing your age.
Given a half an hour to present some of these complicated bylaws. And I just wanted, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't four minutes, is my point, so what is your guidance?
Oh, it's six minutes. It's not four minutes, no. I, I really, I, I guess, first of all, I would encourage you to put whatever information informally out that you're going to put out as soon as possible. There is a lot of buzz about town meeting, but I think many people are unaware of this article, and it, it could generate a lot of conversation at town meeting. What are you thinking in terms of a presentation? I mean, I, I haven't allowed anybody more than six minutes.
I wasn't expecting for us to be allotted more than the six minutes.
There you go.
All right.
But I think it could be maybe different than some past amendments, where maybe, maybe staff could assist with some of just laying it out, and then maybe have some of the folks who have labored on this issue kind of provide their perspectives in how you got there, maybe why it could be a good thing for the community, rather than just...
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean...
From the microphone, from the public comment microphone.
Yeah, and, and some of that will, will come up organically from the questions as well. You know, people will ask questions that will bring about a lot of the things that were discussed here by the speakers tonight. But, but definitely, there needs to be a clear explanation overall what the bylaw is and what it's going to do before we start any conversation among the voters.
I, I think the presentation that we have is a good start, right? I mean, it's, getting that in six minutes is going to be a challenge, but that can be, that can be pared down a little bit, I think. Absolutely. It's got some clear points in there, and so, that's a, that's an excellent start.
So, and as soon as there is something ready, it can be posted on the town meeting webpage. People do go there to look for information, and people are now going there to look at, for the budget information, it would be good if this was up there as well.
So, can the explainers at this point?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If you're ready, put them up, there's, there's no reason not to at this point. And if there's going to be any kind of video, CAD will publish that on their programming, and that gets to a lot of people as well. And you can also, if there are videos, they can be put on your Facebook page or any of the other Facebook pages that people look at, and that'll get them disseminated a bit more.
Thank you.
I'm hearing from my colleagues that the municipal law unit is not approving bylaws if it wasn't demonstrated that hard copies of the entire bylaw and the map were available for everybody at town meeting.
So, in...
Oh, because it's thirty pages.
Yeah.
It's more than thirty pages.
Yeah, records are at fifty pages.
A record motions booklet.
Oh, yeah.
So, this is another reason why we have to close the hearing by March fourth.
So, I'll have to print them.
Got to go kill some trees.
Minutes ticker could not capture that, that would be...
I'm sorry, but, there's just so much, there's, there's a lot of paper on this one.
There is, but there were a couple steps along the way, and questions were asked, and decisions were made, and the suggestion was, put it in the bylaw rather than adopting separate regulations. So, people know exactly what's on the table and not worrying about regulations that might come out down the road. And there is, there is benefit to that, but the one downside is, it's a lot of pages. But, how many of these do we actually, aside from town meeting and asking the question? You know, we're not publishing quite as many zoning bylaws today as we used to back in the day, because people are doing more and more online. Good attorneys, of course, always get the certified copies and have that ready, have their massive library going back to the first zoning bylaw that the town had. But, not everyone is as, you know, precise, so I think, yes, it's important, it's what we have, and if we have to have it all in writing, we'll have it all in writing, as we've done in, even for the, I think, commercial act we did that.
So, I do have one request for the fourth March meeting, so in addition to seeing the marked up version of the bylaw like we're seeing, which is useful for us to see where the edits are, I would like to see at that time what the clean copy looks like, because I couldn't tell you right now how many pages are there, because there are whole pages of redacted text at this point. And I just would like to get a sense of what we are presenting to the residents.
I have a question for Angela. What are they doing with the FinCom book this time?
Sorry.
The FinCom book.
So...
How is that distributed? I mean, we used to have it go to every house, and now we don't.
Yeah, we modified the bylaw to say that a certain number of copies would be available in writing, hard copies at town hall, the library, and I think maybe Roden Bush. And then, at the meeting, we only have the motions booklet, we don't have the FinCom booklet there, and they're not mailed out to households anymore. We now mail out a card that has the articles that are going to be decided at that town meeting to every household, but we don't mail out the FinCom book anymore.
I was thinking if we were going to do the whole thing, that we would pattern that, something like the FinCom book, and have the detail available in certain places to a certain degree, but not going for everybody.
Well, if I could ask...
Everybody's going to read it.
Yeah, what were you saying, Paul, that the municipal...
I'm hearing from my colleagues that, that bylaws that are being passed are being challenged successfully at the municipal law unit if the bylaw wasn't available to the voters, including the map.
At the meeting.
But, at the meeting?
At the meeting. But so, double check, double check that this isn't an exaggeration that I'm hearing from my colleagues. But, I, I do recall a town meeting where half the bylaw was there because of a photocopying error, and that was successfully challenged. But, but...
I thought town council had said, as long as you made it available beforehand in its final form, that people, am I wrong about that?
That sounds familiar, but, you know, there are bylaws, I shouldn't say this, but there's sections of our bylaw that got approved and were passed that would not be the case today. So, if this is something, we can ask, actually, if you... We'll just ask them directly.
I would ask them, I'd ask them directly.
Yeah.
Is that...
I think their attitudes over there have changed over the years.
I wouldn't want to risk it. No, if we're gonna... I'm a guy that has no paper, like, everything I do is digital, I don't print out anything, but, boy.
Well, it probably wouldn't...
All the copies out.
It probably wouldn't be a bad idea to do something like what John said, and have, have some hard copies available here, you know, at the planning office here, or at the library, or ahead of time as well.
We have them here, town clerk, library, for starters, online at the webpage, but we could have them in more places as well. And we also, as we make these changes, you know, we want to also go back and add the updated versions as well, so, because there's been some changes since we began this, so.
John, I've been asked whether we need to vote, our committee needs to vote on the amendments to the bylaw, or should we wait until it's in a final, final form, or whether it's even necessary? Because, oh, because, does the planning board need to know that the, the board, this board is in support of the net result? Or was a good, or was our report previously good enough?
We absolutely want to have, in the end, a vote of McMac, so we can add that, hopefully, to the motions document, that your committee supports it and what the actual vote was.
I think that it should also be in the report by the planning board, that, that should also be in the report by the planning board.
Well, in the unlikely event that we don't get a quorum going forward tonight, I'd make a motion to, that we are in support of the latest revisions as, as further modified tonight.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hey. I'm in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Anything else to say?
Just continuation, I believe, to the March fourth.
Done first, and then last, or are you doing it all together?
It's your hearing, so there, there would be just a, a meeting that they could...
Just adjourned.
Yeah, they could just post a meeting and attend.
All right, so can I have a motion to continue PB 2401, amend zoning bylaw of the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Housing Overlay District to our March fourth hearing, seven o'clock?
In this room.
In this room?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Darren? And I say aye.
Your motion to adjourn?
So moved. Be done.
Okay.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Let's go see how much time is on.
You get minutes, that's it.
I'm supposed to start at nine.
What's the clock for? Yeah, I'm trying to get the date in.
It was one up earlier, but everyone's got...
I don't believe in still anymore.
We still have minutes in adjournment, right?
Monday, it's the first Monday of March.
Oh, okay.
We need a meeting, in the meantime, we'll get it, I don't think we will.
Two, one cracking. Is it two, one cracking? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for your dedication.
Yeah, it's like...
Thank you, that was very good. That's right. I did it on that thirty years ago.
Actually, not tax, the multifamily home, but on a commercial rate.
Paul, good to see you.
Well, I, the insulation guys got there today, and then they posted the inside of my house on their... No, so, my phone's going out.
Nice to meet you.
But, they're going to ask that, and you've got to be able to answer that. See, I led the committee for the CPA, which added a three percent back to the chairperson of that committee, and I had to advocate for why that was good for the community.
Oh, yeah, well, it was good, I mean, well, most, most towns...
But at the time...
Okay, moving right on with planning board.
We have a review of the draft minutes, have a motion to, I want you to approve the minute, draft minutes from January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Second?
Second.
All right, discussion, Bob?
I don't have any.
Dylan, you have anything on the minutes?
Nope, they're good for me.
Darren?
No comments.
Uh, all right, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Correspondents, I did see a letter from... Attorney in charge of transportation at the senior center.
We should probably not discuss that at this moment.
Okay.
We probably should discuss it during the continued public hearing.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, now that I read it.
Yep. Does we have anything else, Jeff?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Do we get a motion adjourned?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Safe travels, Dylan.
Thank you.